Thank you, everyone. We're back. I'm going to continue the Committee of the Hole and we are at nine. Unfinished Business, Street Lighting Policy and Recommendation Report, Director Richard.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Just a bit of background, I know we have some new councillors here. So back in November 2022, council had discussion around street lighting. Several other meetings, there was some follow-up discussion just done and staff's recommendation at that time was to develop a policy. So council agreed and asked staff to come back with an information report on what a policy would look like. So staff did draft a policy, came back to council, more discussion was had with more information sought around what it would look like to add increased service level around street lighting areas. So we did try to have some discussion with Nova Scotia Power. We were unable to get the information we needed by this report. We did have to actually fill out a non-disclosure agreement, but we still don't have that information. So we thought we would just kind of do a very high-level estimate just based on hole spacing, just to give you some, again, very high-level scenarios. One is to light up all roads within service areas of West Hans. And that essentially would be another, and again, these are very high-level estimates, estimated of 765 additional streetlights required. We did an average for 55 watt LED streetlights. There's certainly, there's some hundred watts, there's 75 watts and there's some some lower wattage as for streetlights. So we kind of did an average. For every 55 watt LED streetlight, we're charged $11.27 per light per month. So the annual cost of street lighting all streets in West Hans service areas is, you know, over $100,000 additional cost to what we're dealing with, what we currently have now. So then we looked at, you know, a lesser model to only light roads that, you know, that municipality owns, so our municipal streets within West Hans. So that came out to a total average of 159 streetlights required. Again, we based that on 55 watt LED streetlight at $11.27 and we come up with an estimate of just over $21,000. So currently, we're about $80,000 cost, annual cost for streetlights. Approximately 50, 50,000 in the Windsor area and 30,000 estimate in the Hansport area, just to give you kind of an estimate what we're paying now for streetlights. So. So we do have the drafted streetlight policy. Not sure if you had a chance to go over it, but essentially just, you know, gives the the service levels, expectation of how streetlights are, you know, through, through a petition. We feel that, we feel streetlights could be, a lot of people may want them, but there's areas where some residents may not want streetlights. You know, light pollution is a thing now. So, you know, people like Derek. Some people may like areas lit up if there's sidewalks or walking or just the drivability in our service areas. So. So that's kind of the policy for council to consider. Certainly, if you have wanted any changes or suggestions, it is only a draft form. But we thought it was a good time to put it to council and there is a recommendation, if you do like the policy, you know, staff can take it from there. So any questions, be more than happy to answer.
Thank you Director Richard. Open for questions, councillor Paul Morton.
I do have a question for Todd. So 11:27 per month. Does that include installation of the lights, maintenance and light bulb replacement?
Yeah, so essentially it's a leased program. So Nova Scotia Power, if we said, you know, we'd like additional lights, they put them up, they install them, they maintain them. It's a leased light. We don't actually own the streetlight. We just pay them that monthly charge. So, so it's a pretty good, you know, it's a pretty good system that way. You know, but if it goes out, we call them based on priority and they come and fix it.
Mayor Zabian.
Through you Chair, I think more question to Director Roshan on the costs. So currently, streetlights are general rated throughout the entire municipality. There's nothing that's area rated to any particular community at all. I remember making that change. So again, maybe I'm just, I've been fighting a head cold lately. So. So is it, is it, is it me or does the policy speak to area rating like anything new?
We gave you options. Certainly, general rating is the option. Again, it's certainly, we can change it. Once we get outside the service area, if you wanted to light up certain, you know, subdivisions that, you know, that may come in. There may be the option that you want to area rate that, but certainly it's up to council. We're open to your suggestions, but currently all the streetlights in our service areas in Windsor and Hansport are currently generated.
Councillor Janisch.
Yeah, thank you Deputy Mayor. Todd, the what's the definition of a service area again, please?
So service areas essentially, you know, where we have water and sewer services. So our service areas through Mile Plains, Falmouth, Windsor, Hansport areas.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought. So the second question would be if a group of people were looking to have a streetlight or some streetlights installed in an outlined district, say on a provincial road even. And they're looking for 67% of the residents to be in favor. How do you go about defining the geographic area of the residents that have something at stake in a decision like that?
The policy does speak to that. Kind of, you know, say of a section of street, say it was, you know, 20 poles, it would be 10 streetlights. So whoever, you know, was fronting that street or, you know, close proximity to that, that would essentially be what we'd kind of petition, reach out to those residents and see if they were in favor of having streetlights.
But if there's a large number of streetlights, it could potentially affect a lot more people than just those living on that section of road.
You're speaking of the traveling public going through there, like not living on that section of the street?
Traveling public and depending on the configuration of the road and then the general landscape. You know, they could, you know, there is such a thing as light pollution, as you mentioned, which I appreciate. You know, there could be, you know, it's hard to attach a specific boundary to the light pollution. And so more, you know, so it's a very straightforward thing. Yes, those people living on the road between streetlights, yeah, clearly they're affected, but it could be many more.
Yeah, just in one thing, one good thing about the technology of the streetlights, there certainly is some, some street pollution, but the old technology, there used to be a lot more, it used to more or less like a 360. Now they're quite directional to light up, you know, the area that we want to cover. That's either a sidewalk or a street. We're not trying to light up properties. It's the, it's the streets or the sidewalks that we're trying to light up and they are more directional, but again, there will still be some, some outcast of that, but it is much more narrow.
Thank you.
Okay, councillor Ivy.
Thank you Chair, thanks for the report. Director Richard, so I guess that the piece that kind of caught my eye in here was when you talked about the importance of safety as it relates to pedestrian and vehicle traffic as being the priorities that we look at for having the streetlights. And then later in the report is when it actually identified within the policy is the tail end beneath the developer section. And the standard placement would be one streetlight at every intersection and one at every second utility pole. And the reason for the one at every intersection that catches my eye is correspondence we've seen coming in lately about an intersection that resident deems to be unsafe and I can't agree with them more. I had a very close call and I was the driver with a pedestrian crossing the street. There is a light at the intersection, but it's a larger than normal intersection. It's four-way. Now it's got a slip lane in it and on a wet, dark night, there was zero visibility of the pedestrians crossing the crosswalk. So, you know, I'm not suggesting that we put in an extra set of lights, an extra light at intersections, but I think there are intersections whereby we do have greater risk for the, for the people, for the walking public, that we may look at something like that. Further, I would even say that this takes into account the one light for every other pole, which is the standard within the urban area of West Hans, but I don't know that that would need to be the same standard for streets throughout in the rural area, not to take away from it, but just is the demand that great there? If we started by looking at the higher risk areas, the intersections, which we've had other inquiries about where where a provincial rural route is meeting with a secondary highway and the like. Our always comes to mind as being one area that I think we've had inquiries about that. But that may put us in a more strategic way of looking if we wanted to increase the light or lower the risk within the community, that it's maybe something along those lines that we look at versus a and this is great to have this for information. It tells us what would be if you did just all of West Hans, municipal roads versus ours and provincial and I just, I put that out for consideration. And is that possible now that I've said all that?
Yeah, yes, great points. And it kind of comes back to, you know, the service level. And so we even looked at, you know, because we do get, you know, you know, crosswalks and it was in our service areas in Windsor and Hansport that they like more. There's also, you know, some municipalities and cities, every, every pole has a streetlight. So it's lighting up more of an area. I certainly agree, you know, trailing out on a rainy, dark night. It's, you know, it's, it's hard to see it there. So sometimes lighting, more lighting, but it just comes back to the service level of what you'd like, but certainly, you know, we could look at all those options, but with the policy it kind of outlines, you know, what's the request piece. And so instead of lighting up everything, we can certainly budget for that because as the request comes in, there's the caveat that you know, if everybody wanted every street in West Hans lit up tomorrow, we have that caveat that has to meet our budget expectations too. So. So I think it's a good policy, but certainly some tweaking or, you know, added service levels or reduced service levels in different areas for sure.
Any Mayor Zabian?
Yeah, so I was going to touch on every second poll as councillor Ivy did there, but that answers that question. So, so if council was to approve this, I know it's only committee hold tonight, but ratified that council, there'll be a budgetary line, this coming budget that, so from what I'm understanding is a lot of people are looking for this and and if council passes that, this policy, then you're probably going to have a lot, Chair, that comes through as requests, but so it would be a budgetary item that would be added to this coming budget and allowing for.
Yeah, we would do an estimate and we know some areas that probably the requests are going to come in. So we would kind of just kind of extrapolate that and kind of, you know, increase our budget to reflect that.
Councillor Paul Morton?
Good question for you Todd. So how hard is it for us to put a streetlight on a provincial road or they don't care because we're paying for it?
Yeah, it's, it's just a request. The hardest part is just, you know, NSPI, other availability of when that can get put, you know, available to put in, but essentially it's just, just a call or an email to Nova Scotia Power and additional streetlight request.
Councillor Larry Pinch.
So does the province ever pay for the streetlights on the provincial roads?
So there is a policy with the province, you know, certain intersections that you would see through Old West Hans or the province that are lit that would be paid through by the province, but those are, you know, we don't really get involved in those, but there would be a case-by-case basis where they would think a need for a streetlight would be. I think there's some in the Petrocan, Balkan area, maybe there's, you know, if you picture where there is some streetlights, I think there's one at the end of Dill Road that kind of lights up that T intersection. So yeah, those, those aren't municipal, those are paid for by the province.
Councillor John Smith.
Thank you Chair. So is there a way to have intersections lit without the public getting together and having a petition?
Certainly on municipal streets, absolutely.
On provincial.
But provincial, it would have to be a request, you know, they're, we're not our jurisdiction, so that would be a question for the province. And I think that's the way some of them go. Council wanted to, you know, on the request of a resident, you call Nova Scotia Public Works and say, you know, we'd like a streetlight at this intersection for this reason. And they would take that into consideration, different than we would here municipally for our streets.
So if the public got together and they got two-thirds of the people in the area to get a petition saying they wanted a streetlight at a certain intersection, would that work?
Yeah, I'm not sure the two-thirds, that speaks to our policy. I'm not sure what their policy would be if it was, you know. Yeah, I really can't speak to how you would generate that through the province.
So is this, this is a streetlight that the municipality would pay for? They just need the province's permission or?
Yeah, so, so if you're speaking to this one, if you had several residents that want an intersection or lights on their section of street, again, that's where our policy would come in, two-thirds, but the municipality would pay for that, not the province.
So I'm thinking in Falmouth, the roads are owned by the province. So if they want, if the residents wanted a streetlight on an intersection, how would that, how would that happen? They would have to get in touch with the province?
No, so, so if you're talking just an intersection, but again, it could probably work within this policy. If the owners or the residents around that intersection wanted the streetlight, I think our policy could actually speak to that. So if there was 10 people that wanted it, two-thirds of those agreed with the petition. We would contact Nova Scotia Power and they would have them put on their poll. Because it's not actually, you know, the province's poll, it's Nova Scotia's powers poll, but it's lighting up their intersection. It's just who pays for it. In this case, if we went through the municipal policy, municipality would be paying for that streetlight on that intersection.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Councillor Janisch.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. It states in the policy that street lighting is not available for driveways. But what happens, just for the sake of clarity, if somebody decides they want a street, a single streetlight put up at the end of their driveway, right on the on a pole that's on a provincial road, an individual, single streetlight, does that, does that fall under the policy?
Not the policy. I have one on my yard. I pay a streetlight charge. It's lights up my yard. It doesn't light up the street, but it's on a Nova Scotia Power pole. So I pay that on my, my monthly bill through Nova Scotia Power. So anyone can do that. If you have a pole located and you request can do that. If you have a pole located and you request uh to light up your driveway or your property, uh Nova Scotia Power will uh install a streetlight, but you're paying for that individually.
Yes, I I understand that, and I know people that do that, but I'm asking is is there an option to do it through this program?
No, I think the policy is pretty clear that uh we're not, we're not lighting up driveways or private properties or parking lots, so.
So what's the minimum? Number of uh street, is there a minimum number of streetlights?
I don't follow.
Okay, we're just for this, just I'm just trying to get some clarity for people that are listening, but uh, if you have uh saying an individual can't apply for a streetlight because they already have an option for doing that, but can two individuals or three individuals, three neighbors apply uh for a um for streetlights?
Certainly, yeah, we may have to add that maybe to the policy. We don't currently have a minimum. That's a good point, so it had to, yeah, reflect on that and see if that was the one person uh as a hundred percent, uh, kind of hard to get anything less than a hundred percent. It was only one person requesting it, so good point, so. I want to reflect on that and get back to council on that one.
Thanks.
Councillor Ivy?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I think I'm at the end here for me is the you make reference in the early part of the discussion, your director shared through you, uh Chair to the Director, uh, that the proposed policy applies to municipally owned and operated or municipally leased streetlights. What's the distinction? Uh, where is it that we would have those that we consider to be owned and operated versus leased?
Yeah, great question. So I didn't really cover it in it. So yeah, there's a one hundred percent owned municipal streetlights. Um, the crossing does have some that, you know, may be municipal at some point, but uh we have some along uh King Street Extension along the waterfront. Those are streetlights that are a hundred percent owned by the municipality. Uh, we most likely refer to those as decorative streetlights, uh, you know, that we have the pole and the the housing and everything. So that would be the difference between Nova Scotia Power erected on a pole or something decorative that the municipality would have.
Thank you. And the final one, if I could, has to do with the reference here to the developer being responsible for installing streetlights as part of the developments that they do. And then it also says in accordance with Nova Scotia Power standards, permissions and regulations, and with the light specifications approved by the development engineer, which I'm suing as us. Um, so any issues of policy conflict between what Nova Scotia Power is willing to do, what we have here um and or what would uh come up uh in that regard, or if we're purely leasing from them, then it's we just pay the fee based on where we're willing to designate them, can you?
Uh, a couple of things. So if if we lease them, it's on their poles. If it's an above ground line, uh, all Nova Scotia Power, but we do have some subdivisions that are being constructed that have underground, uh, no, no power poles. So in that case, it may be a decorative pole or an aluminum pole. I would have to meet their standard as far as, you know, where it connects and how that works. Um, and it also speaks to uh, if this policy does get approved, we would include that in our municipal specifications for municipally owned streetlights because we'd want to have some type of standard when it comes to municipally owned streetlights of, you know, size and scale and and look and feel. So we just wouldn't want to hodgepodge of different streetlights throughout subdivisions, so we'd like to standardize that a bit.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, I'll follow up with councillor Larry Pinch, and I think we've, unless someone new wants to speak, so councillor.
So through you, Chair. So if you receive a petition that meets all the requirements and it happens to be on a provincial road, but they're petitioning the municipality as residents, is there a way that the municipality can not petition the province, but send that package of concerns to the province so that they may put the streetlight up where the residents are requesting as opposed to the municipality footing the bill for that?
We could certainly try. Um, or if my experience is not sure how much success would be. Might be similar to a crosswalk on a provincial road. Uh, they don't install crosswalks or maintain them, so that would be, again, uh, we could certainly ask, but uh from my experience, I'm not sure how far we would get with that.
Mayor Zabian?
If I may, Chair, I'll put a motion on the floor for a discussion. Uh, I'll move that committee hall recommends that council approve the streetlight policy, R C O P W dash zero zero two point zero zero as presented.
Seconder? Seconded by councillor Paul Morton? Any questions on the motion? If not, uh councillor Ivy?
Yes, so to get the clarity on as presented, um, and what that means, because in here there's the options, it's lighting all roads, and then there's the option to do light only municipal roads, so which are we uh leaning towards here as being the as presented? Um, unless I completely missed something in our in the the information, the way it was presented here, but.
Mayor Zabian?
I I think those are just cost estimates, just for information. I think the policy would would be if somebody requested something, that just gives a a general idea of the costs. I don't think that's exactly what we're doing unless council made a specific motion to to do this or to do that. We're just approving the policy, and if a group of residents or a street comes forward, this is the policy, this is what, this is the steps you gotta do to have consideration, and then it it would go from there. I I could be wrong, but that's how I interpret it.
Councillor Ivy?
So um, that would mean based on what's in here, that and based on our discussion, I just want to make sure that I understand this, that subject requests, if we receive requests for provincial roads, that we would be applying the pricing as noted in here. Is that correct?
Director Rashard, do you want to uh? I think you've answered it, but maybe revisit?
Yes, uh, essentially, that's the, you know, the uh the estimated costs in the policy. I I get up, I'm just a question for Deputy Mayor. I think we're supposed to leave when the motion's on the table. See, that's why I'm up, so.
Absolutely. So it's as requested?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and seeing no more lights, I'm gonna call for the question. I'll read it again. Sorry, let me get it there. I closed mine. I'll read it as written. It is recommended for committee of the whole to recommend to council, council proof, street light policy, R C O P W zero zero two dash zero zero as presented, and we'll do a vote by clickers. Everyone clear? Motion passed, one nay, councillor Janisch. Thank you, folks. So we're gonna move on to number ten, Report C A O Activity Update Information Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, you've had the report, just a few highlights. Again, orientation continues, trying to do our best to get as much information in front of you. Um, looking to schedule a strategy session moving forward here, you'll expect to see something from probably Deanna here in the next little bit to uh preserve uh another chunk of time from you to think strategy. And again, any questions along the way? Again, I'm sure there's things that we need to revisit uh for for new council members, and if so, please reach out at any time with respect to orientation and the budget process will provide you with uh not only from a fiscal point of view, but it's an opportunity to revisit services and understand kind of all the moving parts. Uh, some of the meetings highlighted there, uh primarily before the Christmas break um with respect to activity levels, the Valley Community Fiber Network uh met uh more recently in the month of January. And we did have a follow up uh council with respect to the letter that went to the province uh for the Avenue High School. And uh after tend to what we'll call active transportation routes or student conflicts with neighboring um development. So we're coming up with a bit of a strategy there, how we might be able to uh create some trails and pathways on and off of the property to help uh the students um kind of navigate uh away from conflict. And we had the principal here and uh members of the Center for Education as well. Uh, the Comfort Centre continues to operate uh at the aquatic uh facility. Uh, certain certainly a shout out to the volunteers there for their service uh over the winter months to date and uh continue to have that service uh available to those that need it. And then pickleball, uh discussions, lots of that seems to be happening. I'm hearing you folks as well, whether it's in the grocery store or a formal capacity, that's on on the front mind of folks as an activity. And then we participate on our ongoing alert ready quarterly review sessions with the province where we all kind of sit and continue to kind of rehearse um how that system uh works and how it's activated in the time of emergency. So is there any other questions, Madam Chair? I can uh do my best to answer them.
Thank you for the update. Uh, councillor Larry Pinch?
You might be going over this in uh outgoing correspondence, but from my understanding from what you just described, that sounds like a fence is not something they're gonna move forwards with. They're looking for alternative solutions.
So the administrator, um, we had the principal, we had in our our school, our C and P representative, and then the other, again, folks um in the regional office and uh trying to contain students with a fence is not a preferred option by uh anyone at the table, really, but uh a fence combined with a trail, but to to think that we're gonna uh be able to keep them in, so to speak, to use a lack of better terms, uh, was not their preferred option, didn't think that it was uh an option. You'll climb over it, under it, cut it. They just really did not encourage that type of approach, so uh um, I don't foresee that being something that the the administration or the Centre of Education would support, but a better coordinated trail system. So for example, on the south end where we have had some conflicts, uh where the former Burgess Farm is, um, just an improvement on the existing pathway there in delineation that would line up with our future uh emergency access slash A T route that we anticipate uh when uh the developer moves out from urban extension through to Paisant and King. Uh, but no, a fence for the most part was not a preferred option or seemed to be in the opinion of those effective uh both at this board level and at the local level. So I don't see that as a as a solution moving forward that they would support.
Mayor Zabian?
So just on that point, the through you, Chair, the C A O, more more like directing the student population to take these predetermined paths and keep them on these paths that we know are safe, secure, that are going to avoid conflict or danger areas and and more directing, they could include some sort of fencing plus routes, et cetera, et cetera, but uh rather than trying to enclose or fence in the property, but I guess that was more of the intention of just trying to begin the conversation and see where it goes and, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm the councillor Ivy.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Uh, through you to uh C O Phillips, uh the alert ready. Uh, Mark, can you just, anything going on with that that's worth um highlighting or?
Uh, I was saying nothing significant. Um, I know we had a letter from the minister, feels like late summer, fall around uh emergency service providers having that ability. Uh, there's a some resistance to that from those folks, um, just kind of um either the responsibility associated with it or the process. So there's a lack of follow up, I would say, from that, at least what's reported to us. But at the municipal level, it's pretty much, it's just a standard review where we continue to review it and define, um, I forget the word that they use, but there's basically what we might define as a public service announcement type alert versus immediate evacuation type of alert. So there are um ongoing education and ongoing review of the dropdown screens and the options. So it really, for the most part, feels like ongoing rehearsal and exercise like information versus change in policy um around that, so.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
Councillor Larry Pinch?
So circling back, was there any discussion about enforcement of that? Because interestingly enough, though not my district, I have had three residents and one business owner approach me about concerns with the high school students in that area. Um, one stating that they blocked the pathway of his commercial vehicle from transporting goods to a property that was being developed, which is of a safety concern for both parties. So I'm just curious if they had any suggestions, because one can suggest that somebody uses a particular trail, but who is going to ensure that that particular trail, at least for the first period of time, uh is being used and the concerns are being mitigated from the other areas?
That's a, that's a hypothetical. That's a hard point for me to answer, other than, you know, when you breach the kind of uh what might warrant a call to the R C and P, I think that may become clearer, you know, when you should call the R C and P if they're doing that type of activity. But inherently, you know, there's this uh like smoking areas and where those are posted and but uh we're quite frankly more concerned about kind of how the traffic through to McDonald's, we'll say the north route, that kind of route, because um uh they're crossing through current development, their apartment building up on the hill and some of those challenges. So kind of the school board says, well, that's not us when they're off of school property and it's us and there's R C and P, but the general feeling is uh there's really no solution, but the best one is to provide the routes for them and the education, and then hopefully they follow that, but they just really didn't feel that erecting a fence around the property of the school is effective really in any way. Um, so, but that's uh, that's just operationally the approach that we're taking now, and I think you'll see some of that in the up and coming uh capital budget as we look to kind of reestablish some of these routes, so.
Great, thank you. Seeing no more lights, we're gonna move on. Eleven correspondence, uh, A, information Avon Causeway activity log as of January tenth, twenty twenty five, none. Uh, two, I correspondence received ledger as of January tenth, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty four, twelve, ten. Amanda Dunfield regarding Windsor flood zone combined sewer overflows, P V S C and S F M intact twenty twenty four municipal climate resiliency grants program. Two, twenty twenty four, twelve, eighteen, Rick Smith, real regarding audit committee brief. And three, twenty twenty four, twelve, thirty, honorable John Lorre congratulatory letter for municipalities on adopting the code of conduct. Anything on those three? Councillor Ivy?
Yeah, thank you, uh Chair. I'll speak first to uh to the correspondents from Amanda Dunfield. Uh, she gives appreciation appreciation to councillor Rem for asking uh the question and raising the point at the last meeting as it related to the P V S C. Um, and working and endeavoring to work through uh the S F M uh regarding a collective lobby uh for the province to adjust its legislation, which I think um on receipt of this and looking at it, you know, since we spoke about it, a good idea, but equally hearing the uh point raised by the P V S C presenters here this evening that they made an adjustment or cut it carved out a special component of that uh for those within the fire zone uh tells me that it may not be as high a mountain to climb as we may have initially thought, so um, I'd say that's something that we may want to take a look at. I don't have anything here tonight for that, but just say it's worth looking at and finding a way to craft a basic report, possibly a recommendation to to try and find out how we can work our way through either N S F M or uh the province directly. Uh, my concern with N S F M is it'll take a while to crank that whole engine up, but it's to find out how uh the province did get that legislated uh piece cut out, and it may have been because there was a hundred and fifty homes there, not to want to make that be what it's about, but uh there was possibly something to see what we can do to try and mirror that. Um, and also the question that she asked here, uh really goes underneath the request section, but if if we've heard anything or uh know anything of the intact twenty twenty four municipal climate uh resiliency grant program, so as a question, uh, uh Chair, uh through you to the C A O, are we uh intact is our policy provider, I think, but is that a grant program that we're aware of? I think it's up to two hundred thousand dollars she references here for uh flood mitigation programs. Is that?
It's uh, we're certainly aware of it, along with all the other grants listed, the proper uh N S F M A M A do a great job of that. I'm not aware of any uh application that we have right now through the various departments. Uh, but that's something we can follow up on.
Okay.
It's with John Ogilvy. Okay, glad, thank you. Thank you, Deanna.
Great, thank you. If we could, that'd be great, just additional funding that can assist with anything we have there. And so that's my comments on uh Ms. Dunfield's correspondence. The other item is Rick Smith, as we know, and um, as uh identified on several occasions, um, uh. Probably getting pretty close to the number of times I have on the issue regarding the budget numbers and the the audit that was completed and going back on the 21, 22, and 23 sets of numbers. And and so he's laid out detail here identifying concerns and issues that he has, and I don't think it should be lost that we're a year from the time that we put the motion forward. I know we have an R F P out there and we'll see the results of that probably in the next couple of weeks. But there's still concerns around this and I feel that I may need to do a summary report on this, just to try and get some clarity on what's going on with with that 2023 year. That's all I have on that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Counselor Remy.
Through you, Chair, I just have one question. It's about Rick Smith's letter and just one of the questions that he raised regarding the audit motion. I was just curious because he had stated in there that the motion said affirm for financial and operational, but then that's not how the R F P went out. I was just curious if that was the case. Like if the if the R F P went out different than what council had in the motion or had requested in the motion.
Uh, who wants C E O or Director Sean?
So three worship. So council had requested a operational financial audit. An operational audit is with a focus on financial is what went out to tender.
Okay, I was just in the, yeah, just the way I read it, it said that it was only operational. So I was just kind of wondering about that. Yeah, and the rest I can I can hold off on.
Okay, so you're good. Okay, Counselor John Smith.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. Yeah, my question concerns another letter by Rick Smith. This one is on the Tremaine Crescent flooding.
Okay, we're not there yet. We're just doing on the correspondence to the first three. We haven't got your request yet.
I'm sorry.
Not a problem.
Down by mistake.
That's okay. We'll get to you, but I just want to clear up these three first that we were at. Counselor Larry Pinch.
And so this also might be for the Director of Finance, but through you, Chair. Are we waiting on the results from that audit to then amend or make corrections to these values? Is that why they're kind of sitting in limbo or because we don't see the same numbers as what's outlined in this letter, like we're not coming up with the same or what what is, because this is reoccurring, how how do we get it off the slate? How do we amend it? Correct it and then not have to continue to have correspondence about the same issue.
I will let Director Rashawn take that question.
So through your worship, and I'm not sure how many of council watched the audit committee meeting, but we had a very in-depth conversation with our auditors at that meeting. And he expressed concerns about going back and opening up former financial year statements. For the reason as it can lead to fraud and it goes against public sector accounting standards based on what we had performed at that time. So just to kind of answer your question, it's not that we're waiting to amend statements. What we're going to be hopeful that the audit, operational audit with the financial focus will come back with is a review of all of the processes that are in place. So our reading process, our billing process, our credit process, our management controls, our compliance with the utility and review board, our compliance with other financial accounting standards to comment on basically that year. And that would be what would come back. We also added on there too, just to talk about if we have capacity for growth. So we added that in there as well.
May I ask a follow up? Certainly. So then what happens to those numbers if we don't amend because the auditor had suggested that that was not the correct course of action? Do they just happens to the information?
So as as we've been discussing, this is part of a credit and the credit was reviewed by the utility and review board. So the utility review board had deemed that we had applied the credit accurately. What it resulted in is a lower than normal revenue in the kind of, I can't think of the 2021, 22, and the 22, 23 year. And that's due to the void that we had to do when we were doing our March and April billing. And then from there, in the 23, 24 year, we had a correction billing for the Underwood meter. And so that also feeds from the Three Mile Plains area. So one of the questions that was posed to us as staff was, well, can't you go back and bill the Underwood meter past four quarters? And based on the utility and review board, we can't because it's within the rules and regulations. And then our auditor further commented that you can't go back and bill any further with that meter because you only knew that the problem existed this year. So you can't go back and adjust a former year based on the information becoming relevant this year. So that was part of the reasoning within that. And so that's where we're at. That's why we haven't gone back and adjusted those numbers.
Thank you, Carly. Okay, so seeing no more lights, we're going to move on to B requests. I 2024, 1219 Avon River Pickleball Club Letter of Intent. Two, 2025, oh, one, oh, two, Rick Smith regarding Tremaine Crescent flooding and three, 2025, oh, one, oh, nine. Amanda Dunfield regarding West Hans Regional Municipality Windsor C S O Inquiry Council Elect Briefing Bio Discussion. Any questions or any counselors wishing to speak to one of those three? Counselor John Smith.
Right place this time.
Right place. I can guess which one.
Yeah, this is just a a quick question. And it regarding Rick's Mr. Main Crescent flooding question. But the answers to that question lie in the consultant's report on Dragothick Creek. I know we we were looking at Cannibal Creek, but there's the other side of Windsor, the Dragothick Creek flooding area.
I will call upon Director Richard to help us with that one.
Great question through your worship. So essentially, we do have a separate study just on the Tremaine Crescent issues along that along that section. And just for the new counselors in the room. So there was a request for direction from staff to council. Because we did have direction to proceed with detailed design for improvements along that section that affects the civic number of 335 on Tremaine Crescent. We have a ditch, a stormwater ditch that crosses that property and at certain times of the year, it does back up and holds water in that ditch. So so that was the concern. So we did detailed design for for that project. It came back to council for a request for direction because the cost of that improved structure, which is a box culvert, was a high level estimate of about half a million dollars. So for for that problem. So that was the request for direction from council. What you'd like staff to proceed with at that point, there were the direction was try to find an easement because if we're going to spend that much on the cross culvert, we may want the easement to allow us to to manage the system more than we have the jurisdiction to now. So so that's kind of where it sits, but we do have a full study done on that Tremaine Crescent condition in that system through C B C L. So it's separate from the Windsor Stormwater Study. It's kind of a one off, but it kind of in the bigger picture, it goes with the whole Windsor system. So but more defined to the Tremaine Crescent.
I I thought it was tied to it in some manner. Thank you.
Counselor Ivy.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And I'm not sure, Todd, let me let me just get my wheels moving here. So I think the one of the challenges that exists with this is that, again, Tremaine Crescent flooded the same as the other areas in Windsor did back in 21. We brought in the request for reports and inadvertently Tremaine Kess- Kess- Kessin got left out of that. We got it caught up. We've got C B C L has done the work in the report, but it was last April when that report came to us. And so the purpose, you know, when this correspondence for Mr. Smith, if I can speak as best I can, but you know, it just seems appropriate that when we had that report presented to us, there was some uncertainty as to whether what was being proposed would in fact work. And so we wanted to get some reassurance on that. And B, if easements were required, would it be possible to get the easements or we would be having to look at something else? That's my recollection of the the gist of it, but where this sort of slipped a bit, if I can say that, is that we were expecting to hear something back last May, June. You get back into the flood season things, you know, and so here we are. And Mr. Smith's just trying to get a sense as to what's going on. It's his property that floods more than any other in that area. It's his property that's carrying the water from the floodwaters coming from the back of King Street that's working its way down the back and through the through the side of his property. So I guess the question is, is do we have a sense as to where we're at with this or when we'd see if an update coming back? That we can have a better understanding if a proposal that was drafted as part of that will work with greater confidence for council that we would actually support it going forward. That's a long story to get to the point there, Director Asher, but are we able to get something back in front of council on this? That would give us a greater sense as to we don't have any support on easement or we do, or there's greater certainty around the box culvert and what's being proposed.
Yeah, absolutely. Through Deputy Mayor. Yes, certainly staff could bring, you know, a recommendation forward. Based on, we haven't received any feedback from the property owners that we reached out to for potential easements. So there's a couple of options. You know, we could go another route to obtain that corridor, or we could look at just the area that we need for the box forward. There's still some land acquisition needed there and bring the recommendation forward if you want to proceed. But with that, I think, you know, new counselors, certainly if you don't have it, I could circulate it again. The 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 study kind of indicates, you know, some some just to be aware that, you know, spending this much money on that solution may not alleviate the the issues that are going on with that residence, because there's still going to be standing water. It's a low lying area. So so just to make you aware that, you know, spend that much money and this again, it's a it's an estimate based on a class B estimate based on what those costs should be. We had to pull another report that was scheduled to be on the agenda tonight because we had to look at, it came in double the budget. So the tendering phase, if you want to tender, just be aware that that cost may certainly escalate more than what's estimated to be. So so that kind of with that, but certainly we did take in the, it was kind of the waiting game. Certainly, I think we had enough time to wait, but certainly if it's council's wishes, we could certainly bring back a report next month and put it back on the table if that's your wishes.
I'd suggest I think it's worth doing to know where we stand with. We do have 30% increase in new counselors around the table. So for to have them understand it, because if it works its way into this year's budget, they should know what it is that's in front of us and how we got there. That was my only reason for laying out that it's it's an area that either we need to find a way to address it or we're looking at alternatives, which you suggest. So I thank you for that. And and I don't know when we'd be able to have it come back. Maybe it's a committee of the whole in a in a month's time or whatever is appropriate there, Todd, that would make sense.
Yeah, it probably I did. I think the request for direction report, I'll just, you know, probably revise that. So it certainly shouldn't take too much time to bring that back. Maybe potentially Committee of the Hole in February.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Larry Pinch.
Mine was just on the 2024, 1219 Pickleball Club Letter of Intent. So at the the last paragraph in the letter, there they suggest that they would request the opportunity to more thoroughly review the proposal for the facility and the most appropriate manner. I just didn't know if somebody had reached out to them from the municipality to allow them to make a presentation at Committee of the Hole or with other options for them to be able to deliver their information.
Counselor.
One, Madam Chair. So I think this is kind of a culminating kind of action where there's all kinds of discussions out there about it. And in this case, Ms. Hughes did speak directly to me. I think she probably spoke with the mayor and a few others. And and short of making a presentation, they just wanted to make sure that council was formally aware that it is a priority of that community as you enter some strategic planning and or budget planning for the future. So I had actually suggested that, you know, put your thoughts to paper, get it in front of council. But if council is wishing for a presentation, we could probably do that. I would suggest probably through the strategy session, we can kind of share some of the ideas that they have floating around. They do have some preliminary thoughts. She notes here through Lindsay's Construction Size and Scale. So maybe as we enter that strategy session pre-budget, we can see what's on the table. And then if you need more from them, I'm sure they'd be happy to present. And I'm sure there's more than a few of them that are not snowbirds, but there's one in particular that is. So she wanted to make sure that her position was expressed at this time.
Hey, anything, Counselor Ivy?
Thanks. And the final piece of correspondence there is the one from the 19th of January, Ms. Dunfield again. C S O Inquiry. And she's got three questions in there. And so I'll just summate them as best I can, but everybody's got the correspondence. The first one was wanting to ensure that the new counselors had all been brought up to speed on correspondence and conversations, discussions over the course of the last eight months regarding the C S O bio program and policy. And I don't know if anybody wants to speak to that or if they're feeling that they're up to date or up to speed enough or whatever the I'm seeing some nodding heads. So I think that that can be confirmed. The other question relates, I think it's going to be the Director of Finance, the C S O sewer charge credit. That goes from Committee of the Hole in July, which looked to see if we can have a program come forward regarding a credit for those experiencing C S O that they get a credit back on their annual sewer charges as part of that process. I note in the the dashboard that we see that there's an update due sometime in 2025. Do we have any better sense of timing on that?
Director Rashawn, do you have an update on that at the time this time?
So through worship, we have given a small update and through an in camera process. So if there is any further questions on it, I would suggest we move in camera.
For that question, I let me just go back is if there's any updates that have been made available with respect to the C S O charge credit. Just asking if we've had any progress on that. I don't know that that's anything that if it was in camera, then that's probably where it should stay. We'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Great, that's it.
I know the last one was on the some pump question. And this last raised last August, September was part of the series of questions as it relates to the flooding in the downtown Stanis area. And I'll read this. We were asking questions about some pumps that were reported to be located underneath the swimming pool used to pump and keep water away from the pool liner and that the water was being discharged into the sewer system, if it was or wasn't. And so we've asked this question and been directed to Public Works and Public Works to Community Development and the last direction went to Community Development. So Kathy, can you provide us with, sorry, Deputy Mayor Chair, through you to Director Keo, can you?
The information I can provide is that we have one half horsepower pump, some pump that is inside located on the inside of the pool cavity to keep the liner from lifting and I'm not sure what else I could.
Do we know where the water is pumped? Do we know where the?
Where it physically goes. I stand to be corrected, but I believe it goes out onto the grass, the grass area. I'm not sure the exact location, but that was just in a conversation with staff today.
Okay, okay, that's all I have at this at present. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Seeing no more lights. We're going to move on to C Oak Going Correspondence Ledger as of January 10, 2025. I 2024 1210 Installing a fence along the perimeter of Avenue High School property and to 2025 0109 financial support to fund a residential property buyout program. Any questions on that Oak Going Correspondence that has been gone out? I think we've heard already on the Avenue. So it's all, we'll wait till we hear back. All good? Perfect. We're going to move on to new business. 12A Epoxy Floor Coating Water Treatment Plant Floors Recommendation Report, Director Richard.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So epoxy floor. So it is identified in the 2024 25 approved capital budget. The resurfacing of the floor coatings for all three water treatment facilities were identified. The existing floors have shown some cases of extreme wear and damage due to chemicals and work traffic. Some areas have not been properly coated, therefore commercial applications of paints will not adhere. So the recommendation is to do an epoxy floor coating. The project would include all labor, equipment, materials to remove the existing floor coatings, seal any existing cracks and resurface with two coats of epoxy. So we did receive five bids. A few of those did meet our specifications. The one recommendation met all our specifications and is below budget. So the recommendation is before you for Stonehard or the application of epoxy floors. Any questions? Be happy to answer.
Councillor Paul Martin?
So through the epoxy floor that you're looking at, it seems we use in the fire department force.
It's a different, it's a, it's a different company that does it, but very similar, kind of the Handsport facility. I'm not sure if we're going to get that flack, but it's going to be a shiny, nice visual appearance, but same quality of that epoxy that was done in Handsport would be on the, the water treatment.
Non-slip, right?
Yes. It has that non-slip material on it too.
Any other questions? If not, there's a motion there. Councillor Ivy?
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Through you to Director Sher. Just the question on the 20% contingency, which I touched on in the document. Do we have any sense of what the left out or not included component of the floor base of wall areas that that might add up to be to get us that 20% is going to do it? I mean, would it be that difficult to calculate? We've got two weeks between now and council before this ultimately goes through. Are we able to get a sense as to how much is not included within the diagrams to the, to the bidder?
So short answer is essentially, we're hoping not to use any of the contingency, but that's essentially the reason for the contingency. So once we start removing what's there, you know, we may uncover some soft spots, some cracking that we're not aware of, but we're kind of, you know, certainly contingencies to cover things that we're not aware of. So ideal world, none of the contingency would be used, but if we get into it and the contractor recommends, listen, I can, I can put this application down, but it's probably gonna, you know, not adhere to in a couple of years' time, you're going to be back and replacing it. So those are the things that very reputable contractor that, that is recommended for the award. But again, the answer to your question is no, we really can't come up with a a figure other than we're estimating contingency of 20%. And again, we don't plan on using any of it, but it's just there for a buffer if we need it.
Got it. So I think I better understand the, the additional square footage not covered in the drawing provided is additional square footage that's not visible at present because it is covered by some other. Is that correct?
Yeah, you know, the square footage was kind of based on a plan view. We have a lot of places you had the tours in the water facilities where we have areas where we have curbing that kind of comes up. So again, the contractor bid based on a drawing. He's going to come in and probably do a better check when he actually has the product. And, you know, so there may be some, some extras that weren't actually covered in the scope for the tender. So no different water main project. You know, we may say there's 400 meters of water pipe. But when it's all said and done, when the pipe goes in the ground, that's the actual price that we're actually, you know, getting billed for if it was 420 meters. So something similar to that where it's a, you know, and this is a unit cost contract. So that percentage would be based on extras outside of the scope for the, that he bid on the square footage. So just a few things like that. Hopefully it provides a little clarity. Not sure if that answered your question, but again, we don't plan on using the contingency. We just, rather than come back to council and delay the project. If we're past that threshold of, I think it's five or 10%, then it just gives staff that flexibility to proceed with the work.
Thank you. And just so you said it was a unit price, but it's noted as lump sum price contract here, is it?
Yeah, I was referring to unit prices for some contracts, like the water main would be unit prices. But if you go over that unit that's specified in the contract, you're paying the extra. In this case, it's lump sum based on the square footage and the RFP that they bid on. So lump sum.
Great. Thank you, Todd.
Councillor Larry Pinch?
I move that Committee of the Whole recommends to council that council approve the award of request for proposal WHRM PW 24-12 surface preparation and epoxy floor coating water treatment facilities to the low compliant bidder Stonehard for the tendered price of $74,916 plus a 20% construction project contingency of $14,983 and 20 cents plus applicable taxes.
Moved by Councillor Larry Pinch. Seconder by Councillor Paul Morton. Any questions on the motion? I'm going to call the question. I'll reread it. Do you need it reread or is everyone good? I'm going to read it just to be sure. Okay. Council approved the award of request for proposal WHRM PW 24-12 surface preparation epoxy floor coating water treatment facilities to the low compliant bidder Stoneheart for the tendered price of $74,916 plus 20% construction project contingency of $14,983 and 20 cents plus applicable taxes. All good? Deanna, can we have that vote put up, please? Motion carried. One, no, Councillor Ivy. Okay, moving on. B 2025 Rand Street and Services Design Recommendation Report, Director Richard again.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So just a bit of background for, again, for the new councillors. So you'll see through the budget process, you'll see capital projects, street reconstruction projects identified in the capital budget. And then you'll probably see it numerous times throughout the year. So this one is approval for detailed design for, for Rand Street. So we're looking for approval to proceed with the detailed design drawings, which will allow us to get to a, a point where we have tendered, tendered documents, detailed design for water sewer storm systems along with our street and sidewalk infrastructure. So that's what's before you tonight. Just that phase to proceed with the detailed design. And then I'll come back in future. Once we have the detailed and tendered, then you'll come back to award the tender to the low compliant bidder. So Public Works does intend to upgrade the section of Rand Street. It's approximately 700 meters in Handsport between Home Hill Road and Riverview Road. So we plan on replacing the, the water mains, the sanitary sewer, constructing storm sewer, reconstructing the road surface along with the new concrete sidewalk and curb and gutter on that section of the street. Design point completed this in 2025. The design, the design is to be completed in 2025. And we hope once that design is complete, we'll be in a position to most likely tender that project within the 2026, 2027 fiscal period. So on November 19, 2024, staff did issue a request for proposal for design services. This project to prepare pre-qualified engineering consultants, all of them bid. After rating the proposals, design point was deemed to be the low bidder, certainly has much experience on this type of stuff, and they were low. And so the recommendation is to proceed with the award to design point for the detailed design.
Thank you, Director Richard. Is there any questions for Director Richard? Y'all went at the same time here. Councillor Larry Pinch?
I think I know the answer, but I need you to tell me through your chair. That cost is just for the design of what we intend upon doing in that 700 meter section of road?
Correct. So it's, it's not just the roadway, but the design is for the water systems. We have to make sure we're putting the proper size pipes in. It's a full, full design of the stormwater system. So adequately designed in the stormwater system, grades, driveway grades, sidewalk elevations and the completed road section for curb and gutter. So it's, it's, it is the full design along with preparing the tender documents that have to be prepared and project management throughout that process with design point. So.
Would that be project management during construction?
No, that would be covered in the construction.
Councillor Paul Morton?
So I got a question for you, Todd. This, it's now, I know it's not the same road, but hitting up Bishop Road on the right hand side with 200 meters up from the intersection. There's a jailhouse culvert, I want to call it. It's got bars in it and it catches everything, but it leads into the Rand Street ditch. Is that being looked at as well?
Is this on the Kings County side?
No, it's on our side. It's just going up.
But towards the Kings County side or?
Towards the tunnel. Towards, no, towards Bishop.
On?
On the Bishop roadside, about 200 meters up from the intersection. There's a jailhouse culvert there because it's got three or four bars that catch everything and it's not spaced wide enough or tight enough. But it leads into the ditch going down around the corner.
Certainly we could look at that. You know, there is a bit of a, you know, leeway within this, but we could actually, you know, I could make sure that that was included. It was just a storm. Sounds like it's a stormwater drain that, yeah, for sure.
Councillor Ivy?
So I just want to be clear on timelines, if I could, through you, Chair. Thank you. Through to Director Richard. Todd, when I was reading this, I was reading it as though the municipality would like to be prepared to start to call for tenders for a spring summer construction start. And I was taking that to be this spring summer, not next spring summer. Am I, can you?
Sure. And when I, when I'm preparing for Committee of the Whole tonight, I actually read that and that's the way I interpreted it too. So, so sorry about that, but it's not intended to be ready for a spring tender. Most likely the detailed design will transpire out through the summer months and maybe even to the fall to be prepared for an early spring next year for construction start. So, so we won't be in that position because it does, you know, consultants are very busy. As you see, you know, trying to get these things designed, there's a fair bit of work to do. So no, we won't be in a position to, for construction for this spring. It won't be till next spring. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, thank you, Director Richard. So if there's a motion up there, if somebody would like to take the motion, Mayor Zabian?
I'll put it on Chair, that Committee Hall recommend that council approve the award of tendered WHRM PW 24-11 Engineering and Design Services for Rand Street Handsport to Design Point Engineering and Surveying Limited Design Point for the tendered price of $58,004 plus value added service of a legal survey at $8,174 for a total of $66,178 before applicable taxes.
Motion by Mayor Zabian. Is there a seconder?
Second.
Seconded by Councillor Morton. Everyone's clear. I'm going to call the question, but I'll read it again just to make sure. Approve the award of tender WHRM PW 24-11 Engineering and Design Services for Rand Street Handsport to Design Point Engineering and Survey Limited Design Point for the tendered price of $58,004 plus value added services of a legal survey at $8,174 for a total of $66,178 before applicable taxes. All good? Deanna, we put that vote up? I'll just note that Councillor Larry Pinch is out of the, the room at this time. So motion passed. Thank you, everyone. So we're going to move on to 12C for Edward Blue View Plains Recommendation Report, Acting Director Forger. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So during the Planning and Heritage Advisory Committee meeting on December 12 in 2024, Committee Member Jane Davis presented a report containing proposed MPS amendments around the protection of the Fort Edward View Plain. The committee passed a motion to request that council acknowledge the report and information therein and also requested that council direct staff to create new MPS policy around the protection of the View Plain. Staff is recommending that new MPS policies be created through the plan review process, which is currently ongoing with the target completion date of fall 2025, so this year, rather than initiate a separate amendment process. And I'm happy to take any questions on that.
Thank you, Acting Director Forger. Anyone have any questions? Councillor Paul Morton?
I'm just trying to recall. I thought council already gave direction of the review planes for the plan review months ago.
Yes.
Did we not already do that?
I believe so. I'm not sure. CAO, I mean, with the Sarah.
Motion of council. Well, I'm not sure if the clerk recalls, but certainly discussion, particularly around Fort Edward lands, I think at the time, but I'm sure there were the formal motion or it was a reference, but we could. So it was a more a formal direction from council clerk? Okay, she's believing the same thing, but we, we could confirm motion of council or direction, I guess. Yep.
Okay.
This certainly accelerates it. Specifically request that.
Okay, while our clerk snares having a look, we'll go to Councillor Remy.
Through you, Chair. I was just curious if, I mean, I get the process and you're already in the middle of the plan review and all of those things. But what if something comes in the meantime with nothing in place? Like, is there anything that we could do with nothing in the existing, like municipal planning strategies or whatever to, to make sure that nobody does build anything to ruin those site?
Yeah. So through your chair, any applications that we receive today or before the plan review is officially adopted will be evaluated on the criteria of the MPS and other regulations as of today. So that would not be a criteria that we would evaluate those planning applications on.
And the plan review is due to be complete the end of this year?
That is the, the target date. So we are currently reviewing drafts now and hoping to go for public engagement in the spring, which will lead us up to kind of the summertime to, to hopefully bring it forward for consideration. Which would then you sort of lead us into the fall because it has to go to the province for, for final approval. So.
I guess my only concern is because that, like, understanding what is going up on that site or proposed to go up on that site for those buildings, like, it would be horrible because we'd be going against our own policies, which then in an appeal wouldn't hold any significance, right? So if somebody could come back and appeal. Anyway, I was just kind of curious where that all went and I can understand why Ms. Davis's, I think it was Ms. Davis, that put that forward and like to, to suggest that because it would be very, very unfortunate if something did come up there that did block those views, just knowing. You know, the significance of what is potentially going up on that site. So yeah, I guess that's where I was wondering because I mean, that, that gives a whole year for development to kind of, not that somebody would purposely do it, and I'm not saying in that regard, but there is some land on there. Anyway, I guess I was just, just kind of wondering.
Great. Councillor Ivy?
Thank you, Chair. So I guess, I'm not sure that, when we started the meeting, I'd asked about this coming to Committee of the Whole and all, the answer provided by CAO was to initiate some discussion on it. And we've had, I guess, some, some discussion on the Fort Edward View Plains ever since we began at the end of 2020 or 2021 with discussions about Fort Edward. And we've had comments made during different, I guess, applications that we've had come forward. Some of them which are, you know, just modest or general applications. But I guess what I look at here, the one thing I'm curious about is that we've changed the recommendation from the Planning and Heritage Advisory Committee. And it's a different recommendation from staff that we actually run this through the plan review process. And can you tell me why we would do that? Having had a, a recommendation that was fairly heavily or fairly significantly discussed in. Having had a, a recommendation that was fairly heavily or fairly significantly discussed in planning, that the lead recommendation would be this versus it being a comment that staff don't support the recommendation secondarily. And what I'm saying that for is, is that the recommendation that came from planning was not to go through the plan review process, that we do something to initiate and start this conversation now so that it gets started because we have no idea when the plan review process will finish. In fact, that was also the, I'll stop in the chance. But we've changed the recommendation that came from the planning committee. And if you don't read the document in detail, you wouldn't know that, I don't think. Can you, through you, Chair?
I just want a clarification. So are you suggesting that the recommendation that is written there has been modified?
It's, it's staff's recommendation. It's not the planning committee's recommendation. The planning committee's recommendation is later down in the document, which didn't include through the plan review process. In other words, they were recommending that this be put forward to council for council to review and consider and to consider beginning a process for looking at the.
Yep. I, I just want to be clear that the PAC recommendation is accurately reflected in the report. Your question whether it should be the first or second, and I, I think, you know, we can reflect upon that a little bit. To me, I think the key is that PAC is represented. And I don't think the director's intended to diminish it in any way other than to, to kind of speak to it from her perspective. So I could encourage you to, you know, just to debate that aspect, if you would.
Absolutely. Comments not meaning to be critical, they're just that it's very rare we had this happen. Hey, where we've got a planning document coming to Committee of the Whole. I'm not debating that. I'm just saying, but that's unusual or unique. And so too is it to see the recommendation adjusted. And there's nothing wrong with that. It's that it, and so I'm just wanting to get clarity is to, it occurs to me that the actual recommendation on the planning committee that worked this out would be better suited to be the, at the head. So the question beyond that, there's comments in here about the, uh, the workload and we've got the plan review undertaken and so on. How much extra staff time would it take to have this initiative get into the queue and worked on in parallel or near parallel with what's going on with the plan review? Such that it is possible in theory that the Fort Edward Initiative could end up finishing first and be incorporated or in parallel managed. It's not uncommon to see things like that take place. Is that at all possible, Acting Director Fugier?
Yeah, through Deputy Mayor, it certainly is possible if that is the direction of council to do this separately outside of the plan review. Doing it outside of the plan review would require its own public engagement process. We would be doing it. So we have a consultant for the plan review. So they are supporting us on the research and the policy development around these types of things. So that would be something that staff would have to take on outside of, of our, our workload. And then, as I mentioned, the, the additional public engagement, the process of bringing it through the approval process, sending it to the province, so on and so forth.
Okay, thank you. And to your, I guess, the final question, it was, I believe, identified at the planning committee meeting, that there was an understanding that, as you've already stated in response to Counselor Rem, applications already in progress stand on the ground and the foundation of the current planning bylaws and regulations and strategy that we have in place. So this is not looking to get in front of any of those. It can't. Anything that's in front of us already would, would proceed underneath the current regulations. Those sort of do get worked on in parallel, I guess. So. Thank you, Director Fugier.
CAO?
Just an update, Madam Chair, and it doesn't, just an update from the clerk that there is a motion on the record November of 2023 that the view planes for Fort Edward for consideration in the view plane in the planning documents be considered by the consultant for the municipal planning strategy. So council had a position on it. Doesn't mean they can't change it because this is really asked to accelerate it. But to answer the earlier question and to confirm that in November 2023, council had that formal direction to review this as part of the process. Again, this is now asking that we accelerate this piece. And that's really, I think, the question before council. Do you want to accelerate this or deal with it within the larger review?
Great. Thank you. Counselor Larry Pinch?
Oh, through you, Chair. Perhaps more from my understanding. So you're explaining what would have to happen if it didn't happen with the plan review. Is that the same process that we followed when we changed the windmill setbacks that were outside of the MPS?
Uh, through your chair, yes, that's correct. We would follow a similar process.
And Mayor Zabian?
Through your chair to Acting Director Fugier. So in your report, I think you mentioned that work has already begun on this with the consultant and, and looking at view planes, looking at the angles, collecting the data. So a lot of work has already gone into it. So just, just want to confirm that.
Yes, we, we already have some draft policies around it and the research has been done and best practice research, all of those things.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Acting Director Fugier? Counselor Ivy?
Thank you, Chair. To you, Director Fugier, if I could, put you on the spot here. Is it your sense that having this continue within the municipal plan review process will get the essence of the Fort Edward View Plain initiative covered more quickly than it being pulled out on its own?
So through your chair, typically MPS amendments done separately would take about six to eight months. So it, the timeline could line up almost exactly with our plan review process, assuming that the plan review process continues on at the pace that we're hoping.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Counselor Paul Morton?
I'll read the recommendation. Move that Committee of the Whole recommends that council acknowledges the work of the report from Jane Davis submitted to PAC HAC on December 12th, 2024 and direct staff to create a new MPS policy through the plan review project, taking into consideration information provided by Jane Davis in discussion from the December 12th to 2024 PAC HAC meeting that speaks to the protection of the historic view plain surrounding the Fort Edward National Historic Site, preserving the cultural, historical and scenic integrity.
Motion made by Counselor Paul Morton. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Wheaton. Counselor Ivy?
Uh, the question that I'm going to have is, we'll keep it in around the table here because we've gone into motion, is whether this motion should be amended to be direct staff to continue with the creation of the new MPS policy through the plan review project, given that it's already started there. And that wasn't part of the discussion at the Planning and Heritage Advisory Committee, that this isn't a create, this is creating new, which almost seems like we're ignoring the work that's already been done. Versus this being direct staff to continue with the creation. Is what I'm suggesting is a possible amendment. Is that making any sense versus just putting through to create a new MPS policy, which sounds like same thing all over again?
Counselor, or Counselor Remy?
I guess my only question is, are we going to have a recommendation from PAC and HAC based on the one that was in here? Like, would we have a recommendation coming forward to council? So if we make this one, then are we just going to disregard the recommendation that's coming forward from HAC or PAC? Do you know what I mean? It's almost like putting the cart before the horse sort of thing if it was a recommendation from that committee.
CAO?
Giving us a little attitude here, Madam Chair. Thank you. I, I think, I think what I would state is, and I think Counselor Ivy is right to say that perhaps a PAC recommendation should have been highlighted, perhaps more so. But I would suggest it's in the report. That sounds like a little bit of a backtracking. I'm sorry. It's in the report. In this case, Counselor Morton decided to put that one forward. He could have put the other one forward. As the administrator, my concern is always that the wishes of a committee have been brought forward for council's consideration. Admittedly, it being the second one and not the first one, it wasn't highlighted, but it was there for your consideration. So if we've misled you in any way, we apologize. But I'm going to say that Counselor Morton knew the difference, maybe did or didn't, and he decided to put that on the floor. So, so that would be my feedback on that.
Mayor Zabian?
Through your chair, I think the report was very clear. Everything was articulated. I got a very good sense of, of everything that PAC discussed in that report and what staff are saying and what the committee was saying. Again, I, I, I feel the, the recommendation is already what we're doing now. The work has already begun. The, the stated by Director, Acting Director Fugier, that they've already began. They've already begun creating policy through the plan review. Quite honestly, I'm not even sure why PAC sent it to council. I get a sense it's for another, another reason, but I won't get in on that at this point. But we're already doing what the motion on the floor is, is saying, in my opinion. Just a little lost for, for thoughts on it right now.
Counselor Larry Pinch?
I just think as a point of clarity, perhaps to CAO Phillips, what I think Counselor Remy was, was asking is that this would have typically, from our understanding, gone to council. So will we make the motion here at Committee of the Whole? And then that PAC HAC motion return at the council meeting after? Am I correct, Counselor Remy, that that's what you were trying to ascertain, not the? Yeah. So I think there was some confusion there.
I do not anticipate bringing this directly to council. This is before council at Committee of the Whole as an earlier opportunity for you to discuss it versus having that single debate at council and deciding it. So I think we've given you a bit more runway to think about this one. So procedurally, I don't see it going directly to council. You've had the opportunity to see it here at Committee of the Whole.
Counselor Ivy?
Yeah, so I still go back to, we've been advised by staff that the direction's already been provided, that the work has already started. And I wish I would have known that when participating in the discussion at the PAC Act discussion a month ago. I could say that, you know, we probably would have had a different discussion then than what we're having now. And so the question is, is all we're doing is putting forward a second motion for the same initiative. And, and that just doesn't seem to make sense to be doing. Unless we're wanting to get added clarity, we can support this motion, put it forward, and that'll be the same motion in for the second time.
Thank you.
Hi.
Does anyone have?
Badly take opinions on that, but I.
Yeah, anyone to add anything else? If not, we have a motion on the floor. Counselor?
Did Counselor Ivy make a friendly amendment to it?
He hasn't yet.
Okay.
That I'm aware of. No. Counselor Larry Pinch?
I was just going to say I concur. So if this is, in fact, essentially the same as the motion that was made in 2023, then it's a redundancy. Doesn't seem like following process if we're going to make the same motion twice. I don't know what we do with that, but that's.
On that, your, your will, council, you can, we have a motion on the floor that has been seconded and I can.
I'm going to call the question, Chair.
Well, I'm going to, we'll call the question. I can reread it and then you guys can, I'll call for the vote. So. Committee of the Whole recommends that council acknowledge the work of the report from Jane Davis submitted to PAC HAC on December 12th, 2024 and direct staff to create new MPS policy through the plan review project, taking into consideration information provided by Jane Davis and discussions from the December 12th, 2024 PAC HAC meeting that speaks to the protection of the history, historic view plain surrounding the Fort Edward National Historic Site, preserving its culture, historical and scenic integrity. Deanna, can you put that up? So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Motion has carried with seven, four and four against. Thank you very much. Moving on to 12D Windsor Community Center Structural Assessment Recommendation Report, Director Kio.
Um, so before you have a report regarding the structural assessment, obviously, for the Windsor Community Center. So over the years, the basement of the community center has been impacted by heavy rain events and more so in the last four years than, than historically. And with the three significant events occurring in 2021, 2022, or sorry, 2023, and again in 2024. Currently, the basement has not been fully repaired since the water damage that occurred in July of 2024, partly due to ongoing discussions with the insurance provider as well as staff's hesitancy to complete the repairs due to the level of vulnerability of the facility that is exposed during extreme weather events as a result of the cracked foundation walls, poor window wells and the general deterioration of the aging building. We are aware of a significant number of repairs and upgrades that have, that are necessary and we have identified those in the capital budget that has been before council. And however, we are now recommending that a structural assessment be completed before we proceed with those. So before you, there is a recommendation where we are recommending we proceed with an RFP for a structural assessment of the building for consideration in the 2025, 2026 capital budget.
Thank you, Director Kio. Any questions for Director Kio? Mayor Zabian? Counselor Ivy?
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor Chair. Through you to Director Kio. Any sense at all of what the structural assessment cost would come in at, any?
For this particular building, I do not. The report that was completed by Hatch in 2020, that cost, that structural assessment was 42,500, I believe, that was approved by council.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the report.
Mayor Zabian?
I'll put a motion forward that Committee of the Whole recommends that council direct staff to proceed with a request for proposals, RFP, for a structural assessment of the Hans County War Memorial Community Center.
Second.
Made by Mayor Zabian, seconded by Paul Morton. Any questions on the motions? If not, I'll call the question. I'll read it to you quickly for clarity. Committee of the Whole recommends that council direct staff to proceed with a request for proposals, RFP, for a structural assessment of the Hans County War Memorial Community Center. Clerk Snare, if you want to put that up there? Motion carried. Thank you very much. 12E Accessibility Advisory Committee Citizen Member Appointments Recommendation Report, Clerk Snare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before you this evening is a recommendation report to appoint citizen members to the accessibility committee. Should be noted within the report that these, that these appointments are made there, that once these appointments are made, that all vacancies on the committee will be fulfilled since the committee actually has two sitting men or sitting members that are from previous appointments. And I'm happy to answer any questions regarding it.
Thank you, Clerk Snare. Is there any questions for Clerk Snare? No? Mayor Zabian?
I may put a motion forward, Chair, that Committee of the Whole recommends that council appoint the following resident members to the accessibility committee beginning January 14th, 2025 and ending October 31st, 2026. Michelle Bourgeois, Amy Delavy and Denise Long.
Motion made by Mayor Zabian, seconded by Counselor Smith. Any questions? I will read it again for clarity. That Committee of the Whole recommends council appoint the following resident members to the accessibility committee beginning January 14th, 2025. beginning January 14th, 2025, and ending October 31st, 2026. Michael Bourgeois, Amy Devady, and Denise Long. Clerk Snare, perfect. Motion carried. Welcome to our, our members.
Like the second one, Chair, if I may. Committee of the Whole recommends that council appoint the following resident members to the Accessibility Committee, beginning January 14, 2025, and ending October 31st, 2027. Jordan Stevens and Rosanna Boyd.
Second.
Made by Mayor Zabian, seconded by Counselor Larry Pinch. Any questions on the motion? I'll read it quickly. The Committee of the Whole recommends council point the following resident members to the Accessibility Committee, beginning January 14, 2025, and ending October 31st, 2027. Jordan Stevens and Rosanna Boyd. Motion carried. So welcome everyone to accessibility. So we'll move on to 12F Diverse and Inclusive Committees Committee Citizen Member Appointments Recommendation Report, Clerk Snare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before you this evening, again, is another recommendation report to appoint citizen members to the Diverse and Inclusive Communities Committee. I'd like to point out that we did not receive any expressions of interest to fill the youth vacancy within West Hans, but despite this vacancy, there's a great desire to move forward with this appointment to the committee to continue the work on making our region a welcoming, inclusive, and safe space for everyone. Staff will continue to seek out applicants to fill the youth vacancy in the meantime. And once a representative has been selected or expression of interest has been received, a report will be forthcoming for council to consider to fill that vacancy, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Clerk Snare. Any questions for Clerk Snare? If not, Mayor Zabian.
I do have a quick question.
I'm sorry.
So.
Counselor Morton.
As you look at the names out there, should they all be from West Hans or? Does I see one person there from King's County?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Counselor Morton, one of the individuals is a Gluecap First Nations representative who does not reside within West Hans.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Zabian.
Make the recommendation, Chair. Council appoints the following individuals as voting citizen members to become representatives and support the Diverse and Inclusive Communities Committee. Anne Bishop, Lisa Bland, Alma Chronic, Jamie Patterson, Dominic Pidjula, Charlotte Paul.
Second.
Motion made by Mayor Zabian, seconded by Counselor Paul Morton. Question, and I'll read it. Council appoints the following individuals. Committee of the Whole recommends council appoints the following individuals as voting citizen members to become representatives in support to the Diverse and Inclusive Communities Committee. Anne Bishop, Lisa Bland, Alma Chronic, Jamie Patterson, Dominic Padala, and Charlotte Paul. Clerk Snare, you want to put that up? No problem. Motion carried, and we welcome those folks to the diverse and inclusive. So we'll move along to 12G Meeting and Committee Procedural Policy Amendments Recommendation Report, Clerk Snare.
Through you, Madam Chair. Every January, the meeting of committee procedural policy is reviewed by staff. The following report provides specific recommendations related to this policy for council to consider relative to changes for an improved policy. Within the report, a table highlights the proposed changes. The smaller changes noted reflect corrections to spelling grammar, missed wording, and to formatting. The larger changes seen within the proposed amendments were made to reflect an increased level of efficiency within the report. Happy to hear the dialogue and answer any questions and take further direction on amendments.
Thank you, Clerk Snare. So if there's any questions for Clerk Snare or discussion? Counselor Larry Pinch.
Moves that Committee of the Whole recommends council direct the CAO.
Justice, justice. No, both your lights came on at the same time, so Counselor Ivy, I'll get to you if there's no more, Counselor Ivy.
Yeah, thank you. So I've got, we'll call some questions or commentary on it, because we may all see this differently. I know us having gone through this several times in the last several years, that it's one of those documents that if you're having trouble sleeping, it's a pretty good one to pull up and read, just because it's a significant detail on, on the procedural policy. So I've marked things up here pretty good. I'll try and keep them pretty straightforward. I think just because these things, when you're going through and doing them, it can become really easy to get lost in the yank. So I'll start with the first one, six two, it's, I have no issues with it, just that I don't think the end aligns, and for people wanting to follow along, it's in the table, is what I've gone to. It's the term of the office of the deputy mayor will be two years, and I think it's period. I don't think the end aligns with municipal elections Nova Scotia is something that's meant to be there. I think that was there back when we did the, the yearly term of the new council in 2020. And it was specifying the start of the April date through to October, and then November going on to become the ongoing one. But the deputy mayor elections being two years won't always line up with elections Nova, municipal elections of Nova Scotia. That's a four year. So I, unless there's some specific reason for that being there, I would recommend that it be pulled. The other one that I skipped over here is 6.1B, which isn't here, and it goes to the appointment of deputy mayor and the appointment of chairs of committees. And when we did this back in October, it was said during the meeting that you can nominate yourselves, but the ability to nominate yourselves isn't built into the, in fact, the only way for nominations for deputy mayor and for committee chairs is by being nominated by others. And so my sense of it is, is that we should include that it be nominated, you know, by, can nominate themselves or a fellow counselor. Sort of makes sense. If people want to put their name and to be put forward for a job, then let them put their name in based on a specific interest. So that would be a new one to come in, 6.1B is what I'm referencing there. I'm gonna come back to the date and time. That may be the longest one we have. I support the all agendas must be have an associated report. I guess the only question I have there is, do you want an appendix sheet for those reports that are intended to be verbal? So is it, is it a summary title, subject matter, and just a verbal report? So I guess so staff would know, not waiting for a report to come makes sense. 9.9 makes reference that the press will be the only persons allowed to use audio recording equipment during public meetings. Honestly, I think the time has come and gone for that as a requirement, as a meeting committee procedural policy that we have in here. I know it's changed in the last year and that it's saying that, you know, you can't do it unless you have the approval of the chair, but everybody's carrying the devices now. There's no way to enforce it. You can't tell if anybody. And if we're, as we know, publishing and putting it on, on live stream or providing the audio recordings, which is what used to be provided anyways, then what's the downside of having somebody that might be sitting in here with their phone on record? I just, I just think it's time that that item has come and gone, and it's time to let it go, given the age that we're living in at the present time. 9.11, my question is, I know, I don't know if somebody's gonna want to weigh in on these or I'll just run through them, but it's the one which makes reference that there will be no audience participation using the live stream video. Does that include the public participation section? Or what is that, what is that, what does that mean? I don't know what that means. So it would, it would be good to know that. And I don't know, because I've sort of gone on here, is it appropriate that Deanna's gonna want to speak to these, or how do we want?
Certainly, Deanna can. My thought is, if the technology fails, you still proceed with your meeting versus we can't operate because we have a technical error.
Absolutely. That's why I agree with the front end part of it. It's at the back end. I'm just asking. When it says there'll be no audience participation using the live stream video, is that meant to say that when we finish the meeting part and we, I just, I think it's worth clarity, is all I'm saying. I agree with the Cogma can change, that's fine. Counselors elected to committees. Here's another thing with dates. And so it's 17 eight for people that are following along. Counselors elected to various committees and boards every two years, or as required by other legislation. Policies are agreement at the November council meeting. Well, the November council meeting is later in November, but it goes on to say, to ensure there are no interruptions to the November committee meeting dates. These appointments will take place on November 1st. So I, I know what's intended to try to happen with this. I'll throw this out and we'll see where we land, but it might be that the appointments take place at the November committee of the whole, so everybody's fulfilled their two-year term if you're midterm, and it doesn't matter when it's a new council coming in, you're fitting everything in the way you can. But it might be that the appointments take place at the November committee of the whole, and the existing members would continue on to the council meeting, or you have a special council meeting after committee of the whole, and everything just keeps on going the way that it should. So it's one of those ones where you're predetermined, there'll be a special council meeting after the committee of the whole to officially appoint the committee members and/or counselors to the committees they're supposed to sit on. It's just, I think this got into place when we were making a change two years ago, and I just don't think it fits for what we want to do functionally. It doesn't serve to see that things continue, is, is all I'm saying with that. So that's 17.8. Given the question that was just asked on the previous item, which is 1712, it asks about council may appoint residents residing in West Hans. There's going to be times when we may want people on committees that aren't from West Hans for specific committees, for specific purposes, such as the Diverse and Inclusive Committee. And so I think what you need here is may appoint residents residing in West Hans, and it may close off on except for work or from other areas as deemed appropriate or necessary. I'm not gonna wordsmith that, but that's basically it. And then the only other one that I wanted to raise, and it's, you know, I've been really light on my report since we started this new council, so I don't know, I don't feel that we need to be so moving things back so much, but, you know, I always need time, and so it were three days, they're looking for five. I'll throw this out, and it can be discussed by people as to what they think, but in the middle would be four days. But we currently have a noon cutoff period, and there's, there's values and benefit in that, so that's that. Get the documentation, they can work on it that afternoon, get it out to council that night or the next day, but it just seems to me an end of day. So instead of it being, if it's, if we want to try and find a spot in the middle, instead of being the, the fifth day at noon, maybe the fifth day, end of day, or before you start business the following, you know, like Wednesday morning. The one thing we've never done is count the business days here, which has been really decent thing when we have a short week. Long weekend Friday or Monday, it's still always been that Thursday that you folks have worked to and done, which is great, but. So anyways, you know, it's not easy work to have staff do this up and go through it. It's, it is very detailed work, and so I appreciate what went into it, but my questions and comments are just on point. So that I think we probably want to get some clarity on as to what council thinks about it. That's it for me.
Thank you, Counselor Ivy. Is there anything you want to add to Counselor Ivy's or? Nope.
Madam Chair, are you speaking to me?
Yes.
Okay, so do you want to go point by point?
Feel free. If there's something that you've, you can lead now, Deanna. I was just, I thought it might be appropriate just for me to list them, and then you can respond.
Absolutely. I tried to capture them all, so bear with me if I missed.
Are they questions of you want answers to, or are they just points you want to make?
Well, I identify that I don't think end aligns with municipal elections Nova Scotia fits in there, so. I don't know how we want to do this around the table. Do we all want to weigh in? I don't think we do. It's, but I just don't think the end aligns is what needs to be there.
Okay, I think that's a simple one that we can be taken out. Okay.
The number of days, again, I'm not losing sleep over it. But I just, you know, somewhere in the middle would be four days, and whether it's a noon hour, a morning, or an end of day. If nobody else is concerned about that, which I would understand.
Yeah, I think the five, I'll, I'll speak on that. I, I think the five days and the noon works, I think. Giving it to staff at the end of the day, if there's something come up that we're getting it out the next day, they may have to, you know, add something on. I just think it gives them the time. I'll, I'll speak on that one. Was there any other questions you had, or they're just more or less?
Well, I, I think some of the points are things that should be corrected. I'm not looking to argue them or push them. I'm just saying that.
Okay, I think we've got them noted. Okay, so if you're good with that, just noted. If there's no questions, I'll go on to Counselor.
Sorry, the one other one, the one that I had in there was allowing counselors to nominate themselves, whether it be for deputy mayor or for, for other committee chair positions, et cetera. Again, I wouldn't have thought to put that in, but that's the way we introduced the nominations in October, and it occurs to me, it's, it's not a bad thing to do.
Counselor Remy.
Yeah, and through you, Chair, I was just curious, the dashboard, is that the existing agenda item? It's just not on in the list of agenda items? Like, is that going to be something that's on every single agenda item for a committee? There were some things not listed on the agenda in there, but it's the dashboard one that will regularly be on there, and should it be included in that?
Through you, Madam Chair. So the dashboard is a direction of council. Happy to proceed with it if that's the wishes of council, and we can certainly add that in there.
I was just curious, like, if that was the existing agenda, that was the only thing. Yeah, and that's good.
You're good. Counselor Larry Pinch.
Through you, Chair, to Clerk Snare. So 17.12, which Counselor Ivy did bring forwards, does say may appoint residents residing in West Hans Regional Municipality, and we did just pass a motion with a resident who does not reside in West Hans Regional Municipality, and because they were part of the Gluecap First Nation. Is, is there a way to change that language? Because that language is pretty specific.
Through you, Madam Chair, to Counselor Larry Pinch. Absolutely. So that was, that language was put in there specifically because we've had residents reach out outside of West Hans wanting to be part of our advisory committees. I will say with that particular committee, the DI committee, within that terms of reference, it specifically states that it has to have a representation from Gluecap First Nation within their terms of reference, but I'm happy to amend that to include that.
Could we say, like, unless the tour specifies otherwise, or, or something of that nature?
Through you, Madam Chair, for sure. I mean, I can take all the feedback that I'm receiving and bring it back to you for council and go from there.
Thank you.
Anyone, Mayor Zabian?
Just on that comment from Clerk Snare, I'm taking it back. I'm assuming this would come back at council anyways with those, with suggestions from this committee to look at again. On, on six one, on the nominations of committee members, I, I think it's always been stated that you can nominate yourself to any committee, just, I think most prefer to have somebody else nominate them, but I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm, on the nine one one, nine point one one, no, no audience participation on the live streams. I, I think that was referring to people commenting on Facebook, et cetera, as we're doing. There's no give back and forth, give and take with that. I agree with the five days before, it, it just gives a lot more leeway on, on getting these agendas out and prepared and, and no last minute additions that throw us into a tailspin sometimes. Other than that, I'm, I'm pretty good with all the suggestions. I know on the Diverse and Inclusive Committee, as Clerk Snare said, as part of the terms of reference, it was a member from Gluecap First Nations, which, you know, you pick somebody from Gluecap First Nations, whether they reside within West Hans or not, but I think that was, I'm, I'm good with the, the suggestions myself, Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, there is a motion recommended, and someone wants to give this a try? Counselor Larry Pinch.
So that Committee of the Whole recommends council. So that Committee of the Whole recommends council direct the CAO to engage staff to make the necessary changes to the meeting and committee procedural policy. Our COGE dash zero zero three point zero zero, following the discussion of council at the January fourteenth, twenty twenty five Committee of the Whole meeting.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Larry Pinch, seconded by councillor Paul Morton. Everyone clear? I'll call the question. I'll read it again. Council, oh, you have a question? Sorry, councillor Ivy?
Well, it's solely to the, the conversation just had with Clerk Snare and incorporating the changes referenced around the table, but the motion doesn't reflect that. The motion is make the necessary changes to the meeting committee procedure policy. It's referencing what's already in there.
No, it, it does state following the discussion of council at the January fourteenth. So I would, I think that would cover what we just discussed.
Yeah. My apologies. I missed it.
That's why I'm going to reread it.
Yeah, no, thank you, though.
Committee of the Whole recommends council direct the CAO to engage staff to make the necessary changes to the meeting and committee procedure policy. Our COGE zero zero three dash zero zero, following the discussion of council at the January fourteenth, twenty twenty five Committee of the Whole meeting. Want to put that up there, Clerk Snare? Motion passed. Thank you, everyone. Just so we know, it is ten fifteen, so we're past the ten o'clock. I will need a motion of council if you want to continue. We only have a few items left, so I'm at the will of council.
Hope to continue.
Thank you, councillor Reason, seconded by councillor Yanish. All those in favor will just show by, show hands. Motion carried, so we'll move along. Thirteen, we have public participation period, so would Amanda, you have, would like to come up? Please, just state your name and where you live for the records, but.
Thank you, Amanda Dunfield. I live in Windsor. Couple of things this evening. I guess, referring back to the pumps located at the Hans Aquatic Centre. It does appear as if staff are reluctant to disclose information on situations that are impacting our homes. We have, this question's been asked, followed up on, asked again. And as everyone here may or may not be aware, I actually did submit a freedom of information request on this information. I am going to read it to you. I guess what that makes me, that leads me to believe that concerns over liability may still exist. I don't see any pumps discharging out across the ground there. I've been over and, and looked at the area pretty closely. Don't know if anyone else has, but if you haven't, I really would suggest going over and taking a look so you can see what structures are there. So I'm going to read my FOIPAP. For anyone who hasn't seen it, I'm, I'm assuming everyone's received a copy of it. Because if all incoming council have been briefed, they would have received it. It was sent through to council, so it should be part of the package there somewhere as pertaining to the civil action. Realizing, of course, that I submitted these out of somewhat respect to try to move the process along. And, you know, there is the option of disclosure. So what it read was, it was a request for record drawings as built for the Hans Aquatic Centre. Stormwater and/or groundwater management infrastructure and Elmcroft Park stormwater infrastructure. Construction reconstruction, including pre-construction elevations, ditch inverts, and culvert sizing, also including topographical information prior to any infrastructure. Construction reconstruction projects, sizing calculations, and assumptions for pumps and pipes installed. End points of converges with convergence, pardon me, with Cannibal Creek combined sewer system. Historical ground and stormwater flow monitoring data for the last twenty years and infrastructure maintenance. Logs from two thousand seven to present. That was written by a stormwater engineer who I've been working with for some time. So I, I did want to pass that along. Haven't received any feedback on any of my freedom of information requests from twenty twenty four at this point. I understand that some other residents have inputted some as well, and they also have not received any information. Mine was much more detailed. I, I think some of them were very basic, so I wanted to bring that to council's attention. I also wanted to, I guess, say that the pumps at that structure have been a topic of several conversations in recent days. I've actually found out quite a bit about them. I'm not going to go into detail. I think we'll save that for a conversation that's not here at this table. But I do want to give a brief update on one recent conversation I had. And this is what I'm at liberty to say right now. In answer to the question, were CBCL representatives ever advised of pumping systems installed at the Hans Aquatic Centre and/or any other areas of town local to South Danes to pump groundwater away from exteriors of structures into the combined sewer system? The answer to that was, yes, they were made aware by staff. So the information we received here tonight isn't quite consistent with the discussion. The amount of digging that had to be done to get somebody to come up here and sit and talk about that. It just, to me, it's just not quite meshing with some of these other conversations. So I'm just kind of floating out there for council's knowledge. I mean, maybe this is all disgusting camera anyways, but if it's not, I think it's something you should be aware of. Anyhow, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Amanda.
I'm still waiting on some sandbags.
Thank you. And now we're at fourteen in camera, so I, a motion to go in camera, please.
I'm moved.
Made by councillor Paul Morton, seconded by councillor Larry Pinch. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, we're going camera.